This is the Commissioner meeting of June 25, 2025 at 6:00 PM at Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden, absent. Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Deputy Director Space?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number four is public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail in email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2025, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, and Strauss News, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At least at this time, please mute all electronic devices. Commissioners, please remove your phones. Number five is an approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, can I have a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Space, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Number six, proclamation certificates and presentations. We do have a proclamation. Do we have anybody here to accept this? Okay, perfect. This is a proclamation for the 40th anniversary of the Sparta Food Pantry, and Commissioner DeGroot is going to read that and present that to Valerie Macio? Did I get that right? All right, only because they're karate kid, I got that just saying Ralph Macchio to accept. Okay, Jackie, you're up.
Yep. Proclamation. Whereas the quality and character of life in the communities across Sussex County are reflective of the concerned and dedicated individuals, and whereas through the dedication of staff members, volunteers, partners, and benefactors to Sparta Community Food Pantry has served Sussex County as well as part of Warren and Morris Counties for 40 years, and whereas since the start, the Sparta Community Food Pantry has grown to feed over 4,000 people a month by instilling hope to families and individuals struggling with food insecurity, and whereas the Sparta Community Food Pantry assists those that are homeless, homebound, disabled, displaced, students, seniors, veterans, working, poor, and chronically ill through donations they receive. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners hereby recognizes the Sparta Community Food Pantry on their 40th anniversary and honors their commitments to the well-being of our community, and be it further resolved that we encourage all residents to join us in acknowledging and supporting the Sparta Community Food Pantry for their dedication to improving lives in Sussex County by the order of, by the, by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Chris Carney, Commissioner Director, Jill Space, Deputy Commissioner, Jack DeGroot, Commissioner, William Hayden, Commissioner, and Alan Henderson, Commissioner.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you very much for, for this. We appreciate it. As I said, it's our 40th anniversary. And as some of you may have remembered, we started at the First Presbyterian Church in a closet, literally in a closet, and now we have a facility.
If you don't, if you could speak into the microphone, it just won't get picked up on the record. You could take, you could take it up, pick it up too. Yep. If you want to sing a song, feel free.
Burst into song. So we started out in a closet, literally at the First Presbyterian Church, 40 years ago, and now we have our, our facility over at 99 Demerist Road, and we feed anybody in need. We're all volunteers, which is a big difference between a lot of us and a lot of other food pantries. We are the largest food pantry now in Sussex County. We work with about 40 or 50 different nonprofits, all to serve the clients in Sussex County who are struggling in whatever way that they are. We are totally nonjudgmental. We don't require anything other than need. So right today, on the way here, I got, received a phone call that there's a lady in her car. She's living in her car right now, and she can't get food, so we're trying to find her, where she's located, and we'll get her some food for tonight or tomorrow. So we're constantly out there. We are also the pantry of choice with Atlantic Health Systems. So when there are people who are discharged after surgery or some sort of a health reason, and they go to someone that doesn't have either a home or someone to take care of them, we are the pantry of choice where we help them either restock their kitchen or to keep them going in a healthy, with giving them healthy food until they are such healed or able to be on their own. If they are not on their own, for whatever the reason, we continue to feed them. In some cases, we have been feeding people for five years, and we go there on a weekly or bimonthly basis in giving them healthy foods. We work with many agencies. We work with local share. We work with SNAP, ZooFol, Daisy, Family Promise, and we find a way to get to people and to help them in the way that they need help. And this is something we have evolved with over the years. Our recent, our recent effort is what we call go-bags, where we work with the local police, and we give the local police about six bags of food. So they're the first people that find people, okay? If they're, if you're on the street, they're the first ones that are called. If you have an accident, your house burns down, they're the first ones. So we work with them to give them bags of food so that they in turn can meet the person at the site of the trauma, and then they will be able to give them food. If you're leaving a DV situation and you don't have food and your kids are screaming, you think about going back. What the go-bags do is to give people pause, give people a chance to think what their next step is, whether it's going back to a situation, finding another resource, finding a place to live, finding clothes to wear for tomorrow. The go-bags give you two days of food, and the police will bring it to you. The next step is to call the resources necessary for the particular trauma. So we deal with that. We are always looking for new ways to find the people who are most in need, the forgotten people. Those are the people that we take pride in, and we make sure that they are cared for with our facility. Most people don't know that we exist, which is always tricky when you're around for 40 years. Most people have never heard of the Sparta Community Food Pantry, but we're here, and if anybody ever needs us, we're here for everyone in the county or thereabouts anywhere.
Thank you. Thank you. Mind if we take a picture? Number, number seven is executive session. Linder, will you please read that?
Resolution providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and C, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B and, whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated below. Number four, sheriff PBA and prosecutor salary ranges. Number seven, matters relating to litigation negotiations and the attorney-client privilege, jail, and open space. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by the law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and be it further resolved that the Board may take formal action after returning from executive session.
Just want to clarify that the prosecutor's matter is actually under mic seven.
Oh.
They're not, they're not under CBA, but they're still in a negotiation, contract negotiation. Thank you. All right. Motion to adopt executive session resolution and enter into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Deputy Director Space moves. Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain, carries. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn from executive session and return to regular business?
So moved.
Commissioner DeGroot, have a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Space, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. All right. Number eight, there is no public hearing. Number nine, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Space moves. Commissioner DeGroot, or I'm sorry, Henderson, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Floor is open. Agenda topics. All right, seeing none. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Henderson.
Okay, it's going to be pretty brief. It seems like it's been implied two weeks. On January 13th, I attended the Opaccon Flag Day Party where several residents were honored for their patriotism. It was a nice event. Unfortunately, the weather once again wasn't cooperating for Flag Day, which now has been scheduled for September. On June 14th, Senator Parker Space and I met with three individuals from Indivisible, Cory, Jesse, and Julie. I'd like to thank them personally here tonight. There was great dialogue back and forth on various issues and concerns. On June 16th, I attended the Sussex County Planning Review Zoom Meeting. Three issues were discussed, and they will be brought to the planning board at the next meeting for their approval. On June 18th, I attended Sussex Vote Tech Graduation. I had the privilege of shaking 162 hands of graduating students. I was very impressed with the number of graduates that are heading to various military branches for the United States. Congratulations to all the students, wherever their dreams take them. On June 19th, I attended the Sussex County Republican Golf Outing at Crystal Spring. It was a great turnout, excellent job by all those that put together the event. On June 23rd, I attended a golf outing, and believe me, I do not play golf, for Tunnel of Towers, which is, was a huge success, bringing in over 200 golfers. But I did go for the lunch, which was a fantastic lunch at Farmstead Golf Course, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner DeGroot.
Yes, starting with the Muskanekon Watershed Association. The Muskanekon Watershed Association, MWA, held its annual meeting this past Wednesday. Highlights from this past year included engaging 396 students in educational programming about the watershed and river, and planting 1,180 trees with the help of 150 partner organizations and volunteers. The Muskanekon River begins in the southern region of Sussex County and impacts communities such as Byram, Stanhope, and Opaccon, for those that don't know. The MWA is seeking projects to support the upper watershed region in the future, and I believe there's a valuable opportunity for us to collaborate on future initiatives in that area. Next, with NJTPA. This past Monday, I attended the joint meeting of the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, Project Prioritization Committee, and the Planning and Economic Development Committee. During the meeting, we received an update on the revised project prioritization scoring process. The update highlighted how the process now aligns more closely with the NJTPA's strategic goals, such as safety, economic competitiveness, environmental sustainability, and resilience, to name a few. Each goal area has been assigned a weighted value informed by the input from seven other metropolitan planning organizations, as well as the New Jersey Department of Transportation, NJ Transit, and the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. As many of you know, the River Sticks Bridge Project in Opaccon was submitted to the NJTPA from us, and this updated scoring criteria will be used in evaluating its merits. Next, the County Library Services. On Wednesday, June 18th, I joined Director Carney and Deputy Director Space at the Sussex Wantage Library for the ribbon-cutting ceremony of the new Dot Mobile Library. It was an honor to speak at this milestone event, and I want to thank everyone who helped make the project and the celebration a success. I'm excited to see Dot on the road, bringing library services, resources, and meaningful connections to communities across Sussex County and beyond. Additionally, reminders, beat the heat and enjoy summer fun reading at Sussex County Library System with six branches open six days a week. Sussex County Library System offers cool, air-conditioned spaces, free Wi-Fi and vents for all ages. For kids and teens, check out Storytime's crafts, STEM activities, read to a dog, games, and book clubs. For adults, look out for book discussions, wellness workshops, fiber arts, cooking, and more this summer. Reminder, the Color of Our World Summer Reading Challenge kicks off tomorrow, June 26th, and runs through July 26th. Open to all ages. It's a great way to stay engaged, have fun, and win prizes. Plus, don't miss the bonus reading challenge in August for kids ages 12 and under. Read five books and earn a prize box featuring a Summer Reading Rocks t-shirt, tickets to a 2026 Sussex County Minors Game, and more. This is all thanks to Brainstone Reading Rocks Program. That concludes my report. Thank you. God bless.
I attended the first-ever Inspiring Women Networking and Awards Luncheon hosted by the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce. I was honored to be a nominee for two of the awards, although I didn't win. It was an honor. Attended the Senior Olympics with Director Carney, and I was shocked that Commissioner Hayden actually attended also. It was nice to see him out. It's always a great event sponsored by the Sussex County Senior Services. It was well-attended. Attended the ribbon-cutting, like Commissioner DeGroot said, at the new Sussex County Mobile Library. It was paid for by the ARPA funds, which I think is important to note. It was nice to see a project started from the beginning, and it was just an idea become a reality. And I'm not an avid reader, and I'm never afraid to say that. I don't have a great attention span for reading books, but I did discover audiobooks, and I found out while I was in the mobile library that they have audiobooks, so I actually got a library card. So it's still sitting in my car, but the intention is that I'm going to use it, because I do love audiobooks. And I attended a meeting with Ron Tappan and Sheriff Strata on the contract negotiations with the PBA, and that was interesting. Division of Senior Services, Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program provides financially eligible individuals who are age 60 years and older with a one-time $40 electronic benefit to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables at participating farm stands in New Jersey. This once-a-year benefit is available at the Division of Senior Services Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. Eligible seniors who are disabled and not able to come into the office can have an application and their benefit mailed to them. In addition, Senior Services staff will be distributing the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program benefit at all the locations below during the beginning of July. July 1st, 10:00 to 11:30, Brookside Terrace, 33 Mill Street, Newton. July 2nd, 11:00 to 12:30, Liberty Towers, 32 Liberty Street, Newton. July 8th, 11:00 AM to 12:30, Vernon Senior Center, 21 Church Street, Vernon. July 16th, 11:00 to 12:00, Franklin Senior Center, George LeBance Road, Franklin. This benefit will be available from June 1st, 2025, through September 30th, 2025, and must be redeemed by November 30th, 2025. Please contact Senior Services at 973-579-0555 to obtain additional information. Division of Social Services, Food Drive to help feed Sussex County residents in need. Shoprite locations in Newton, Sparta, Franklin, Sussex collected food this past Saturday to benefit the food pantry at the Sussex County Division of Social Services. 103.7 WNNJ radio personalities were on location at the Sussex Shoprite to spearhead the drive. Donations will replenish the shelves, help replenish the shelves at the Social Services Food Pantry to assist families and individuals in need. I also want to thank Commissioner Henderson, because he volunteers, I think, every Thursday at our food pantry at 7:30 AM?
Seven, 7:30.
Regularly. If anyone is in need of food themselves or for their family, they can stop by the Division of Social Services located at 83 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, from 8:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday. Food or pet donations are accepted during these hours, or special arrangements can be made for after-hours donations by calling 973-383-3600. The Office of Mosquito Control continues to see above-average and even record-setting numbers of adult mosquito populations in overnight traps. The office has been receiving many complaints from residents regarding inundations of mosquitoes on their properties. Mosquito Control staff are working very hard to address these issues and will continue to perform truck-mounted ULV spraying applications to provide relief to areas of high mosquito activity. Residents should continue to anticipate high populations of mosquitoes over the next few weeks. If you are experiencing any issues, please call Mosquito Control Office at 973-940-5225 to request service to the area for trapping and control. Aerial applications, due to the presidential flight restrictions implemented by the FAA from Friday, June 20th through Sunday, June 22nd, an aerial application to treat for larval mosquitoes could not be scheduled, which will cause a future increase in adult mosquito populations in these specific areas to the county. Weather permitting, truck-mounted ULV spraying will be performed to combat the hive vector and nuisance mosquito populations. For additional information, contact Office of Mosquito Control. Please, please go to www.sussex njus/mosquito. That's all I'm going to read. Oh, and the Spotted Lantern Fly Program, that we are again offering free spotted lantern fly traps to Sussex County residents. If residents would like to receive their free traps, please contact the Office of Mosquito Control at 973-940-5225 to schedule a pickup time. Traps can be picked up at Mosquito Office on Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:30, but scheduling an appointment is preferred to ensure staffing availability. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Department of Engineering and Planning. The Division of Engineering submitted the North Jersey Transportation, Transportation Planning Authority fiscal year 2026 Local Concept Development Grant application. The application requests $868,000 to fund a planning-level study to evaluate rehabilitation replacement options for the Sussex County River Sticks Bridge in Opaccon. I brought that up last meeting. Department expects the North Jersey Planning Authority will be receiving the applications received over the next few months. Repairs of the Sussex County Bridge X30, located on Libertyville Road in Wantage, which is also County Route 650, has been completed, and the bridge returned to full service. I'm sure Jack is happy with that. Construction crews of Department of Engineering and Planning are scheduled to pave County Route D18 tomorrow. Once paved, the in-house guide rail crew will install the bridge guide rail system. Department anticipates the bridge on Fenwick Road will be returned to service before 4th of July. That is in Frankfurt. The Sussex County 2024 pavement program is nearing completion. Milling and pavement work on the portion of County Route 517, also known as Sparta Avenue, is expected to be completed early next week. This is the final county route included in the project. Long lines and pavement markings will be placed on the roads over the next few weeks. The Division of Planning remains focused on advancing the state, state plan cross-acceptance process. The cross-acceptance report has been submitted to the State Office of Planning Advocacy. The Division, along with Sussex County Negotiation Committee, will be meeting with the state in early July to review comments provided by Sussex County and local municipalities as part of the report. I believe that's happening July 2nd. I will be a part of that. And the Sussex County Division of Planning is available to discuss the plan and any answers at 973-579-0500. Some good news from the college. This is something that Lorraine Henderson, myself, and Cory Homer, which congratulations to Cory Homer. He is a new president at the college. Kudos to him, and kudos to the new board that's there now, who put him in that position. They are heading in the right direction, and I think every commissioner up here is very happy that Cory Homer got that spot. So Sussex County Community College received a $40,000 grant from Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield for the National Fitness Campaign. This will be the base funding to create an outdoor fitness center at the college that will be open to the students, county employees, and the community. I've been working with the county deputy administrator, like I said, with Lorraine, and the college to bring this to fruition, and I'm looking forward to a groundbreaking in the summer of '26. The center will allow individuals to exercise independently through an app provided by National Fitness Campaign or through classes run by the county or the college. It's a great opportunity for further, to further connect the college with our community. And I believe, Lorraine, correct me if I'm wrong, that with our Blue Cross insurance, they get a $20 credit or per month?
Employees can get a $25 credit per month to show that they were working.
That they were working at.
They took the track of the app, and we're using it regularly. Then each month, they can get a reimbursement from you.
Right, perfect. So try to keep our employees healthy and the community, right? So it's, it's a very good thing, and I'm happy that it finally came to fruition. Finally. Two years. Two years is way too much for me. District 24 report, again, I said it before, I'll say it again. These are not my words. I'm giving a report from District 24. If you have any questions or concerns, you can contact their office, call them up, email them. I'm sure they'll get back to you. They have a great staff over there. So again, their words, I'm going to read them. For those who pass through on the turnpike or parkway or only know it as a state comics punchline, "New Jersey is concrete, smokestacks, and a roar of traffic through exit line with wah-wahs in other gas stations." For others, it's a lyric in the Springsteen song on MTV show "About the Shore." But natives, transplants, and nature lovers know the Garden State, the most densely populated in the nation, could easily be called wooded state. Its woodlands from the Pine Barrens to the northern hardwood forest, compromising 40% of its 5.6 million acres. Most woodland is privately owned. Assemblymember Sean Keane and Dawn Fantasia want to ensure those areas remain protected from creeping overdevelopment. Their bill, the Senate is S699 and Assembly is 682, supported various state environmental groups and released from the Assembly Environment Committee on Monday, will establish a Woodlands Protection Fund to acquire development easements on privately-owned woodlands. That fund, which will be operated by the State Department of Environmental Protection, would use federal money, private donations, and appropriations from the state legislature to purchase easements. To qualify, woodlands must be at least five contiguous, contiguous acres in size and be managed by the landowner according to state statute. Landowners would not be required to open those woodlands to the public. This bill does two things. It protects these natural spaces and respects property owners' rights, Keane said. With owners facing pressure to sell and build, the state, the state needs to proactively preserve these areas to safeguard these ecosystems and protect private owners from those pressures. About 950,000 acres of forest are privately owned, with 40% of that owned by people ages 65 and older. The state, local municipalities, and counties, and federal government own the other 1.037 million forested acres. Preserving forested land helps protect native species, air quality, and vital watersheds, and other waterways. Economically, woodlands generate billions annually through tourism and forestry. This is personal for me. I live, I live where I live because of the open space, the trees, and the rural landscape. When I'm not working, I'm outdoors, and I can't imagine Northwest New Jersey without those things, said Dawn Fantasia. I want to protect our great outdoors from overdevelopment so the future generations can experience the beauty the state has to offer. Report from District 24. As Commissioner Space said, I attended the Senior Olympics, which was a great event. The weather pretty much held out a little bit, kind of, not so much, but it was a good event, and a lot of seniors came out. How many, how many you think, how many came out?
275.
275. Wow. Yeah, so all, all the municipalities, for the most part, showed up. Opac was a little shy. They only have seven people. Well, there was a lot of people, and I think they had a good time. They ate good, and everything was good. So again, just kudos to Cory Homer. It was a big deal for that to happen, and colleges head in the right direction. All right, that's all I have. So number 11 is approval consent agenda. There is none. Number 12 is the approval of the minutes. A little backlogged, so we're going to go over all three. So we have three here from May 14th, 2025, May 28th from 2025, and June 11th from 2025. Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Commissioner Henderson moves. Deputy Director Space, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, carries. Number 13 is ordinance. We don't have any ordinance. Number 14 is appointments and our resignations. There are none. 15 resolutions. Okay. I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through M.
So moved.
Commissioner DeGroot moves. Deputy Director Space, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. All right. Number 16 is awards of contract change orders and bids. Contract change orders, bids consisting, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determine that adoption of the said resolutions is and will further the public interest. Motion to adopt resolutions A through H.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. All right. Number 17 is financial. We have two bills lists. The first one is Resolution A, is the payments of Bills List A from June 25th, 2025. Motion to pay Bills List A.
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, have a second? Deputy Director Space, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. B, Resolution B, payment of Bills List B from June 25th, 2025. Kind of a motion to pay Bills List B.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy, I'm sorry, Director, Commissioner DeGroot moves. Commissioner Henderson, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Abstain?
Director Carney?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Number C is amending the 2025 capital budget. Have a motion to adopt Resolution C.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Number D is introduction for the first reading ordinance 25-05. This is capital ordinance providing for various roadway and bridge improvements in and for the county of Sussex, state of New Jersey, and appropriating the sum of four million six hundred and sixty-six, four million six hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars from the county's New Jersey Department of Transportation grant to pay for the costs thereof. Can I get a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading and authorize a clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for the first reading, and also post same in a bulletin board in a lobby of the county administrative center, together with a notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on July 23, 2025, at 6:00 PM prior to final adoption of this ordinance?
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, have a second. Commissioner DeGru, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Eighteen personnel, we have none. Number nineteen admin report.
Yes, sir, real briefly, we had our quarterly risk meeting this, a couple weeks ago, we went over all our claims and stuff like that. I'm not going to brag, I'm just gonna say we're in good shape. I don't wanna jinx the process. We had eight total claims, six of which were report only, two were that somebody went to the doctor. So it was a good month, a good quarter, and it's all good, it's all in line of how we train and how people pay attention to things. There's a lot of training going on right now, we had a lot of P O S U training going on right now, they're getting retrained and going through all the mandatory trainings that we're doing. I'm going tomorrow to the executive commissioners meeting for the statewide plan tomorrow, that's our quarterly meeting tomorrow, so I'll be at that. What I'd like, as everybody said, our DAPW groups, our engineer, our facilities guys are very busy, very, very busy. I just wanna put out to the public to please, please be very diligent, particularly, we're doing a lot of grass mowing. I don't know if you're going around the county, you've seen a lot of trucks, a lot of grass mowing. Please be patient with these, this work zone that they set up constantly moves. So it's not a stagnant workforce, when they've got a truck following it, it's always moving. When you come up behind a mower and you don't have a line of sight to pass, don't worry, you're not gonna, you may tick off the guy behind you, but you can make the world a lot happier if you don't get in that lane and that car's coming, that's a bad day. My guys have to react to it, they stop, they try to bridge and make gaps for you, sometimes it's too late, they don't have the timing to do that, and quite frankly, they feel awful about it. So please, just be patient when you get to the mower, when you see you gotta clear a line to pass them, do it, but don't do it too soon. And please pass along to everyone that is in need of water and ice, get up on our website, JCPN L has set up ice and water stations across the county. All the shop rights from High Point all the way to Hoppakon, there's some sites, there's a site open for anybody that needs water or ice in these stringent conditions. So please check our website for those locations, and that's all I have.
Perfect, thank you. Twenty county council?
No.
No? All right, twenty-one unfinished business, we have any unfinished business? No? All right, any new business? I have a couple, does anybody, no? Good. I have a couple things, I got a call from Mike Richards, I know we reached out to Commissioner Henderson, and he directed him my way. Last year, I don't know if you guys remember or not, during the fair, they did a food drive for us, and they gave out money to nine different entities. This year, they're cutting it down to three, which will give a little bit more. It was us that's gonna get the money, Benny's Bodega, and the Veteran Cemetery in Sparta. So last year, I think it was around three hundred dollars, this year hopefully it's three times as much. So if you see any food drives, it's gonna be a monetary donation, not canned foods or what have you. So if you're at the fair, you can give us a little extra money, goes towards the food pantry, which we provide throughout the county, as you know. I did get a call from a friend of mine, from a teacher at High Point, they are doing an exchange student program. Basically, how it works, and I'll get you guys the information, students from other states are gonna come here to have the opposite effect. So if they're from the city, they wanna come to rural, and what this teacher's doing, what this exchange program is, basically teaching them how to live somewhere else, and so on and so forth. So what she was asking for, if we have some time to maybe meet these students out, she's gonna send me the schedule, so if you have a little free time, you know, maybe you show them the farm, or if they're somewhere, you just meet up with them and explain who you are and what we do, and we all grew up here, everybody on this dais has all grown up here, so give them a little insight on Sussex County. Maybe they might even be visiting the zoo.
Sounds good.
So. That's all I have. So number twenty-three, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please don't enter the microphone, state your name and municipality for the record. Motion to open a floor for public comment. Commissioner Henderson, have a second.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Floor is open.
Sandy Hall, Lake New Jersey, thank you for the opportunity to address everyone. The state will address two issues regarding the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area and Sussex County. First, the New Jersey State Master Plan. The Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area is noted as an area of quote-unquote "critical concern." In the New Jersey State Master Plan draft, upon inquiry to the State Planning Department, I was told critical concern meant the Cultural and Environmental Resources in Duigna, a unit of the National Park Service, that these resources should be recognized and protected. I emailed my comments to the State Planning Department urging the master plan object to the National Park and Preserve Designation as supported by a private, non-government alliance and protect the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area as is, and I also sent my comments to the Sussex County Planning Department. The second issue was HR 6492, the Explorer Act enacted January 4, 2025. Quote, "an act to improve recreation opportunities on and facilitate great access to federal public land and for other purposes," end quote. And the question is, what are those other purposes? Secretary of the Interior, Borgan, recently rolled back environmental protections on public lands. If the National Park and Preserve Designation supported by the non-government alliance is approved, approximately 56,000 acres in Duigna will be open to forested field conversion, and that could allow resource extraction, timbering, and other negative environmental impacts hidden in that quote-unquote "other purposes," as noted in the description of the Explorer Act. To be brief, through a pilot program, this act allows the Secretary of the Interior, Borgan, to conduct surveys and gather information for gateway communities. Gateway communities are those communities providing access to recreational areas, and this is the good part. So part of the facilitation of the great access to federal public lands includes assessing demands on existing municipal infrastructure and the expansion and diversification of visitor experiences by bolstering the visitation at existing developed locations under that utilized, that are underutilized on nearby federal recreation lands and waters that are suitable for developing, expanding, or enhance recreation is identified. Hundred and eight pages of government blah, blah, blah. Warren County in New Jersey and North Hampton in Pennsylvania appear to be seeking inclusion in the pilot program. I've heard the effort for pilot program inclusion is limited to those areas. So before Sussex County requests inclusion in the pilot program, I respectfully suggest a careful read of the Explorer Act. Although it appears to benefit the public with a variety of strategies and programs, some of the methods and implementations are not clear, and on a personal note, I see this act as more government control reaching into our communities. The Secretary of the Interior is no friend to the environment, and I have to ask if this proposed actions in this act are worth the well-being of our local communities and the Delaware River. Thank you.
And I have to.
Yes. Sandy, you talk as fast as I do, you knocked it out in three minutes. That was good. That was right to the, right to the second. Thank you for that. Go ahead, sir, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Younger. I hail from Middlesmith Field Township, Monroe County, Pennsylvania. I'm here because in my capacity as President of the Local Chapter for Society for Pennsylvania Archaeology, our group has developed a rather interesting proposal. It pretty much amounts to a heritage tourism initiative that we think that in the long run would wind up inuring to your benefit. So I figured I'd just lay it out in broad terms for you. What we are proposing amounts to a federal project, hundred percent federal. It's predicated on the Antiquities Act of 1906. That basically allows either Congress or the President himself by way of proclamation to establish a national monument in the interest of the country and for its inspiration. Now, in our township, we have a fort constructed in 1756.
Fort.
In Shaw. Fort happens to be directly associated with Benjamin Franklin, who actually wrote up the organizational orders for the Malaysia Company stationed there. And what we have in mind is a complete reconstruction of this fort in time for the tricentennial of the French and Indian War, some thirty years into the distant future. The way this applies to Sussex County is that we're saying to ourselves that ultimately the National Park Service would deem the area appropriate for a historic landscape approach, which means that in addition to simply reconstructing this fort, they would pay particular attention as well to the historic elements thereby, an example being the historic Walpak Ferry Crossing. And we could very well see this ferry reestablished along with the fort in time for this upcoming tricentennial. This means that now, New Jersey would be able to participate in this national monument by way of essentially becoming a gateway community to a national monument and to promote your own local heritage in the process. I brought with me a letter of support from our own Monroe County Commissioners' Office, a one-page vision assessment, and a three-page briefing paper. I will turn these over now to your clerk for your future consideration. Thank you. And as I have 26 seconds left, I will simply point out that we would appreciate if you deem it appropriate, we'd love to get a letter of support that we can ultimately have read into the congressional record for this national activity. Thank you.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. I wanted to talk tonight about the federal cuts and how they will be harming Sussex County. Sussex County residents covered by Medicaid are 15,319. Children are 6,266. And SNAP benefits are 4,055. This is just for our county right here. And these things cover 30% of the state's births, behavioral health services, substance abuse programs, long-term care for New Jersey's elderly populations, and also for those with disabilities. Families will have to make a choice between medical care and food. There'll be a greater burden on the state and the local community, and there could be a loss of up to 20,000 jobs, very much hurting the state and the community. If these things go through, I would urge the commissioners to pass a resolution to oppose any cuts to these programs. And I don't have time to read it all, but I have copies for everyone of a proposed And I just wanna say that this is very concerning, it may not be happening tomorrow, but it very well may be happening in the near future, and I think it needs to be planned for, and if at all possible, we need to stop these cuts. And I just wanted to say real quick that, well, I guess I'm just glad to hear that Commissioner Hayden went to something, but.
He was gonna go to the library, but he didn't show up.
But, I mean, him going to something is, at this point, a joke. You know, that you bring it up, that he went to something, like it's, you know, you guys go to all these things, and it's like, oh my God, he went to something. So as usual, you know, I call for him to resign, because I feel like, well, he's not even here taking up a seat, but I feel like, you know, it's a wasted spot. And I'd love, you know, I'd love to have someone on here who's actually working to do things for the county. And I just had one quick observation. The way the meetings are conducted now with executive session in the beginning, as opposed to they used to be in the end, I'm sure there's reasons for it, I don't know what the reasons are, but it makes me feel that it's a burden on people to have to sit here and wait for half an hour, an hour, an hour and a half, until you guys, you know, come back, and then, which makes me wonder, and I'm not saying this is true, but it just goes through my mind, is this like some kind of way to deter people from coming and voicing their opinion, because they do have to sit here for a long period of time? I mean, I've come to meetings for years, whatever, and most of the executive sessions have been at the end, so we're not waiting, you know, everything has gone through, and then we can go home, and then you guys do it. And that's all I have to say, thank you. And this is for everybody.
Thank you. (applause).
I know this is outside of your realm, but again, I'm just here tonight to talk a little bit, to raise awareness. My grandparents fled Germany in the early 1930s. Their two children, my father and my uncle, were born in Newark, where my grandfather worked as a mason, creating memorial gravestones, and my grandmother was a Hausfrau, or housewife. I shared this piece of my family history and ask you to think about our current administration and the parallels to Nazi Germany in the 1930s. While clearly the situations and leaders are not equal, I want to draw attention to the many parallels. The first parallel is the erosion of democratic norms. Adolf Hitler and his rise to authoritarianism succeeded in delegitimizing core democratic institutions. Our administration is trying to do this, too. They have attacked the courts, the electoral process, the certification of a legitimate election, and agencies and staff that don't serve the Project 2025 agenda. A second parallel is the use of dangerous rhetoric and propaganda. The Nazi Party used, as does our administration, inflammatory statements and disinformation to shape public opinion and emotions. There are constant attacks on the mainstream media, calling them fake news. In the 1930s, the Nazi Party similarly called the press "Lugenpresse," or "press of lies." While we are not burning books yet, I ask you to pay attention to the rampant book bans and removal of information from government sites. It's called controlling the narrative, and it manipulates and oppresses the citizens you are supposed to be serving. A third parallel is the scapegoating of minority groups. Both the Nazi Party and our current administration use language and policy in an attempt to demonize minority groups and stir up hostile emotions against said groups. There are other parallels to note. The rise of a charismatic leader who pushes a sense of national emergency to legitimize his actions, also the attempt to concentrate power in the executive branch and suppress any dissent. I encourage you to watch a movie called The Zone of Interest. It is not an action movie, nor is it graphic. It concentrates on using background sounds throughout the movie to denote what is happening beyond the fence of a Nazi leader's idyllic home. It shows how people in power, even those living yards away from a concentration camp, can completely distance themselves from the horrors they are inflicting on their own citizens. It shows people in power with a complete lack of empathy. This is a lesson we do not want to repeat. Thank you, I appreciate the time to speak.
Good evening. Your office, Newton? Over the weekend, the brutal arrest of another hard-working immigrant was caught on tape and difficult to watch. A 48-year-old landscaper was surrounded by numerous fully masked and armed ICE agents, chased across a busy intersection, and pepper sprayed in the face. They assaulted him, pinned him to the ground, repeatedly beat him on the head, dislocated his shoulder, and threw him in the backseat of a car. ICE claimed that the man threatened an officer with a lawn trimmer, but the video does not support that accusation. It was quite obvious that the five grown men who participated in this violent takedown, while additional ICE agents stood around and watched, were untrained and ill-equipped to do their jobs. Any reputable law enforcement officer would tell you that those ICE officers acted far beyond any reasonable force and should be held accountable for their criminal actions. Violations of the man's civil rights. As if the story of this everyday American being so savagely treated by the US government is not heart-wrenching enough, the story- beyond any reasonable force and should be held accountable for their criminal actions. Violations of the man's civil rights. As if the story of this everyday American being so savagely treated by the U.S. government is not heart-wrenching enough, the story of who this landscaper is makes the event even more upsetting. The man so brutally attacked this weekend was Narcisco Bronco, an immigrant who came to this U.S. in the 1990s, seeking a better life for himself in the land of the free and the home of the brave. He worked as a landscaper for the past 30 years and has no criminal record. He raised three sons, all of whom were born in the U.S., and grew up to be responsible, law-abiding, and hard-working adults. His son Alejandro said of his father, "He is always a good dad. He always made sure we had food on the table. He always taught us to respect, to love our country, to always give back." As a result of Narcisco's parenting, all three of his sons joined the U.S. Marines. His son explained, "We joined the Marine Corps because we love our country and want to give back. Our parents taught us to be appreciative, be thankful of our country, about being patriots." I ask you to think for a moment about how Narcisco's respect for the military in this country stands in sharp contrast to our Commander-in-Chief's comments about the military. He called our soldiers suckers and losers. Narcisco raised three young men to volunteer to protect and serve our nation. Trump sits in the White House, where he is dismantling the government and engaging in a war without congressional approval, unnecessarily putting our military personnel stationed around the world at risk. Narcisco sits in a detention center, wounded and wondering if he will be able to stay in this country where he has been a responsible, contributing member of our society for three decades. I ask the commissioners to do whatever is in your power to ensure that no immigrant is subjected to this type of violence here in Sussex County. Please speak with law enforcement and federal authorities about treating immigrants in our community with respect and dignity they deserve. Thank you.
Unfortunately, Narciso Bronco is not alone in being brutalized by DHS agents. We were only able to see the video of the takedown because it was recorded by a humanitarian bystander. There are hundreds of other arrests occurring across the nation every day that do not get caught on tape. The story of Narciso highlights an aspect of these immigration roundups that Trump does not want you to know. The Trump administration lied about the immigrants that they were going to deport from this country. They claimed that they would target gangs and drug dealers. However, they really intended to target anyone in this country who is here illegally, even those who have been here for decades and are actively engaged in the legal process to become citizens. They didn't advertise that original goal because they know it's a dumb idea and a racist idea that the vast majority of Americans are against. Rational Americans know that immigrants serve a multitude of capacities that make our economy strong and our communities vibrant, and they have the right to become citizens. But it does not stop there. The administration doesn't arrest just gang members, drug dealers, and illegal residents. They lie about that, too. The administration's goal is to deport 3,000 immigrants a day. However, they cannot find 3,000 criminals and illegal immigrants every day, so they target people simply because of the color of their skin. In Narciso's case, ICE agents were in the area and saw a Latino man doing lawn work, so they assumed he was an illegal immigrant. They got lucky because he is here illegally. However, other detainees who are being stopped and manhandled are American citizens in possession of real IDs. ICE agents disregard their proven identity and arrest them anyway. Put yourself in the position of Latinos and other minorities being attacked by DHS officers across the country. Imagine yourself leaving your workplace, picking up your child from school, going shopping, or attending a scheduled meeting at an immigration office, and suddenly being surrounded by six plainclothed, heavily armed, and fully masked strongmen simply because of the color of your skin. Would you continue to want to go to work, shop, or bring your child to school? Would you want to live in that kind of fear because racists now control our government? As an elected official who swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, please do your part to protect immigrants and all minorities who live here in Sussex County. Please make your voice heard, that you disagree with the Trump administration, and please show us that you understand that immigrants, not racist. Racists are what make this country great.
Today happens to be June 25th, 2025, and I discovered a couple days ago that on June 25th, 1950, North Korea invaded South Korea, starting the Korean War. General Douglas MacArthur was installed as the commander in charge of our assisting South Korea in driving the communists out. Part of what he wanted to do, since so many of the communists he was fighting were actually Chinese soldiers, not North Korean, he wanted to go right through North Korea into China. Now, this general was well-known, I think, for his activities in World War II in the Philippines and other places, valedictorian of his class at West Point, was overruled by the haberdasher Harry Truman. That military expert pulled him out. And look where we are today, Communist China, our biggest enemy on the planet. 1979, President Carter started into motion and turning the Panama Canal over back to Panama, taking it away from us, which I consider to be an act of treason. He didn't have the guts, though, to do it in 1979. It didn't take effect until about 20 years later, when he was gone and people would, I guess, forget. I want to thank President Trump for Operation Midnight Hammer, which hopefully is going to deter a situation that we have now with Red China from occurring in the future, where we are opposed with a country like Iran with nuclear weapons.
One minute.
President Carter did something else in the 70s, and I haven't heard anybody speak about this. We were giving nuclear technology to Pakistan, and he assured us there's no way they can make a weapon out of this technology. See how that's done, right? Obama, Biden gave billions and billions of dollars to Iran to help fund them. It's... A friend of mine has a sign that she's going to post on her property, and it's about Democrats. It says, "They promise everything, deliver nothing, and then blame it on someone else." Thank you.
I have a little ditty tonight for your amusement. Please listen well. How dare you? How dare you, President Trump, trying to secure our nation's borders and do the most important job of keeping our republic sovereign and safe, your number-one job? How dare you, President Trump, putting your law-abiding U.S. citizens first over non-citizens and those who don't respect our laws? And of course, all other countries such as Canada, France, Italy, would allow over 20 million people, many improperly vetted, into their country without no problem. How dare you, Tom Holman, Director of Immigration and Customs Enforcement, take on looking for those 300,000 children who might be prostituted as sex slaves, abused for cheap labor, living in fear in these United States? How dare you, President Trump, for trying to undo the damage that Obama caused by sending pallets, 1.7 billion, of cash to Iran? How dare you, Trump, doubt that, of course, they would use those funds for world good? How dare you, Trump, call out the legacy media outlaws about their propaganda and false reporting, trying to manipulate the sheep and the unknowing, or worse, uncaring public? They were right that President Biden was sharp as a tack and running the country until he wasn't. So just how dare you, President Trump, risk your life for your country? Shame on you, sir. Thank you. And I have some additional time. I was wondering if anybody had the chance to read or look at that movie that I had mentioned during the last meeting, UN CO2 Pipelines Uncovered. Did anybody have a chance to see that yet? Do you saw it?
I did.
Okay. I would appreciate if everybody could do that. We did have Commissioner Hayden come to the viewing, and he gave very good insight as to basically the diameter of the pipes that they want to put in, which is way above what normally is done for gas lines. Also is mentioned that the summit group who wants to do most of this, they want to prohibit the pipeline from going down too deep, so four feet, four feet is an issue. That town in Mississippi had two incidents where this compressed CO2 gas escaped, and this doesn't rise to the top, it keeps to the bottom. And what it does, it chokes people, takes the oxygen out of the air. So it might be a little far-fetched for us right now, but you look how much land that China owns in the United States? They could easily get on board with that and say, well, I got another way to take care of these U.S. citizens. So please, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I do believe in issues that could affect us down the line. I sincerely hope that my commissioners will watch this movie. It's an hour or less. Thank you very much.
I'm very concerned that the budget reconciliation bill includes reducing SNAP benefits. If this bill passes, it will directly impact over 4,000 families in Sussex County alone. SNAP provides monthly food assistance, improves our kids' health and development, reduces food insecurity, boosts economic stability, and stimulates our local economy. I know firsthand how critical this support is. As a teacher in the Sussex Wanted School District, I worked closely with some of the most economically disadvantaged students. 70% of my kids qualified for free lunch. For many, this was the most nutrition they were receiving. These families also relied on our Backpack Program to provide meals over the weekend. When COVID hit and our schools shut down, my primary concern wasn't only how to teach these students online, but also how my students were going to eat. I heard the fear in their parents' voices as they worried that they could no longer provide the nutrition their children had relied on at school. From that very first week on, my family and I, along with a small group of retired teachers, pooled our resources to buy groceries. My family would cook the nutritious meals, and every Friday, my husband and I would deliver food and snacks to five of my students' families. We continued this throughout the entire summer, supplementing with support from the local YMCA. The relief and gratitude we saw on both of the parents' and the students' faces reminded me of how essential these support programs are. But something else happened also. I saw not only families stabilize, but children thrive. The experience created empathy amongst classmates, a sense of community, and a real understanding that when we support each other, we all rise. That lesson far outweighed anything I was teaching in the curriculum. There was never a question from some of my more fortunate students as to why the others got snacks or meals, and they didn't, but a general understanding that by assisting each other through this time, everyone did better. My families who had more began to share more, and I felt like my whole classroom became a community of givers. What more could a teacher want than creating givers during a time period in our current history that there seems to be more takers? My students, when both giving and receiving support from others, learned the lesson coined so well by Robert Ingersoll, "We rise by lifting others." I tell you this story of my experience because many people do not realize the amount of families in our county that thrive from programs like SNAP to supplement their household budgets. We cannot afford to let thousands of Sussex County kids go without basic nutrition. They needed to learn, to grow, and to succeed. I urge all of you as a collective community of commissioners to pass a resolution to oppose cuts to this budget. Thank you.
Very much out of my comfort zone. I weep for my children, who grew up playing school by closing the blinds and hiding under the table for a lockdown drill. I weep for my nephews, who hid in a classroom closet texting goodbye and I love you to my sister while they waited for SWAT teams to evacuate them from their school. I weep for a student who finally got the nerve to come out to his parents and was told that they love him, but God does not. I weep for my daughter's best friend and sister, who recently lost both of their parents and now have to worry about being two of the more than 15,000 county residents who could lose Medicaid benefits. I weep for the young girls and women, many of whom I know, who have been subjected to predatory behavior and abuse, and now live in a country where this behavior is normalized and even sometimes out of order. I weep for the innocent humans being ripped away from their families and their children by masked armed men without identification or warrants. I weep for the humans who have been sent to prisons in other countries without due process and are being held in way less than human conditions. I weep for women who have been forced to make choices about their bodies that are largely regulated by insurance agencies and government officials. I weep for military and their families, who could be deployed in the very near future, and to what end? I weep for a society so dependent on social media and the internet that we seem to have forgotten what is true and real at times. I weep when I hear the song, "This land is your land," knowing that protection for 58 million acres of national forests will likely end. What is to become of this land? I hope for a future that strives to protect our children from senseless gun violence, or violence of any kind, for that matter. I hope for access to quality medical care for all individuals. I hope that we can work together to end homelessness and hunger. I hope for a future where women truly have the same rights as men. I hope for a nation that embraces diversity, knowing that it is through experiences and knowledge of others that we all become better. I hope for a place where national forests are protected with all of our might. I hope for an end to misinformation and disinformation, where the people of our country are eager to learn together in order to make the world a better place for all. I hope for the end of fear of speaking out and the renewal of respect for others' opinions. I hope for the land that I truly love, one that upholds the Constitution, cares for the sick and the needy, raises difference, and seeks to live with respect and dignity for all. This land was made for you and me.
Here in my capacity as mayor to pass along some information that's going to be, probably everyone in this room is going to be impacted by it, but yesterday I participated in a meeting with DOT, a remote meeting regarding the bridge replacement by the Lafayette Pond. This has been a project that has been talked about for 15 years, probably. I've participated over the last three years in probably five different of these remote meetings, sometimes 30 people on them from the DOT, but it does look like this is ready to start. They're telling us in a meeting that we had yesterday that there's a pre-construction meeting. The planning office from Sussex County was alerted to this. They did not participate, but I encourage them to participate in the next one because there will be impact on secondary roads, county roads, local roads, et cetera. The plan is that they will be doing Stage 1, which is supposed to actually start, the contract was awarded, let's see, June 10th officially, so it's set in back a little bit. The original contract was with the low bidder. Some issue came up, which delayed it two years. They've now got a new contractor, I'll give you the name in a minute, who's going to handle it. But Stage 1 of this is supposed to actually start probably at the end of June. That's the prep work, signage, and all that kind of stuff. But at some point, the Stage 2 will be installing a temporary bridge on the northbound side of Route 15 across from the pond. There's two homes located in the proximity of our maybe houses, historical, you know, building in the center of town there. And it will involve probably a month of one lane alternating traffic on Route 15 southbound, northbound, for 25 days. It's going to be a problem, but when they originally proposed this plan, they wanted to make it the whole length of this was going to be that way. So we talked them into doing a temporary bridge on the one side, 30 days initially, and then we'll end up having that occur probably, they're saying, September, late September. Probably, they're saying September, late September, maybe October, they're going to honor the fair and the minors events, et cetera. And then the whole project is going to take 18 to 24 months. So it's, it's going to be a big deal. I did tell them that our EMS, our fire department, are in close proximity, so they'll be shut off. All of, I, I asked them for the meeting, that Frankfurt should get involved, Sparta should get involved in these meetings because they're going to be the most, you know, besides Lafayette, are going to be impacted the most. Tried to encourage them to put up signage, to alert people. I told them, they're aware of it. I mean, you have all the traffic coming through during the, this time for, you know, pumpkin picking, anything, Christmas trees, all that stuff. It's going to be an issue. So, and then there will be another 25 or 30 days when they then move the bridge onto the other side. So once they get it actually in place, it will be two-way, but we're talking about 60 days of, of, you know, major impact, actually. So the Sheriff's Department obviously should be aware of it as well.
Kevin, you got time, but I just, one question. Can you get me that information when that next?
It, July 1st is supposed to be meeting. It didn't sound like it was going to be positive, but I already, my intention is to add probably Bill Copeland, again, or have somebody from his office handle it. The Sheriff's Department, we did have Glenn Redden, who was the commander at the Augusta Barracks, I got him involved. But I think Estrada should get involved and have somebody at that meeting as well, just to, you know, it's all about broadcasting, so people are aware of this. It's going to be a problem.
That's what we're hoping is.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
More involved and people out there.
So we'll hopefully get some issue there.
Do you have that contractor?
Yes, it is. Colinelli Brothers? Colinelli Brothers. That's, that's who it is, and they're going to be, you know, monitoring this, this meeting, the pre-construction meeting, once they get involved. And just bear with me, because in my official capacity, I just want to do a shout-out for Autumn Silvestri from your planning office. I've dealt with her for 15, 20 years, most recently on the state development and redevelopment plan. Any ag issue, farmland preservation, open space, she's a wonderful employee, totally knowledgeable. She really helped us out as our negotiating agent, because I, I myself did the CART, which is a responsive document, because right now, we're going through that COA, we're going through this plan, and all the stuff's due June 30th, and she was very, very helpful in getting that done for us, at least, you know, receiving, extending our time to get it done. So I just want to give a shout to her. I was going to talk about the jail, but I'll let that go. I'm over my time. But I do reiterate my, my last comments in the last meeting. Thank you.
Motion to close the floor for public comment. Return to your business.
So moved.
Commissioner Grue, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Number 24, reminders, please check the county's website, www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Number 25, adjournment, motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Commissioner Henderson, you have a second? Deputy Director Space, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Have a good night. Thank you for coming.